Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we approve minutes and get into the public hearing, is there any public comment on agenda items? No? Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9th, 2025 work session and special meeting and the September 16th, 2025 regular meeting and the September 30th, 2025 special meeting?
Send them.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
I have to abstain, I was not present September 30th.
Ms. Evelyn Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Garzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wodden-Husky?
Yes. Okay, so I guess that's we'll just we'll just do the benefit assessment districts first here. So, you know, again, this is a pro forma thing. We do this every year. If you're here because of that, you've probably got a postcard in the mail basically saying that you have the right to come and this is your public hearing. You know, the town has a whole bunch of different, you know, special districts. There's what, four sewer districts? There's the Hidden Glen Drainage District. There's, you know, a whole bunch of different districts. I mean, pretty much every one of the town's going to be getting a postcard for that. So this is the time. If, you know, I guess I'll just say this real quick, that the all the sewer districts in the town of Cornwall have DEC mandated capital projects that if we do not are not making progress on, the DEC can come back and fine us $35,000 a day. And I can assure you, the fines on those far exceed the cost of the projects that we have to do. So, you know, therefore, the town board is, you know, following and dealing with the consent orders. And we have basically INI projects. In three of the four districts, we completed the INI project in the largest sewer district, which a number of you are in. And we're currently on a Phase 2 project in the largest sewer district as well, which serves the village. But, you know, that's where you're mostly going to be, you know, be seeing increases is in those sewer districts. So I guess... Do I need to read anything, Dominic, on this? Or do I?
No.
Okay. So I guess I'll just open it up to public comment on special districts. Is there any public comment on the special districts? No? Okay. Then can I get a motion to... Does the board members wish to make any comments on the special districts?
No.
Before I close the public hearing?
No, thank you.
No? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Evelyn Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Mike Garzey?
Yes.
Mr. Wodden-Husky?
Yes. Okay. All right. We also have the continuation of the NEMA proceeding at this time, and they're just here for their normal update. Building inspector is here tonight. I will say that there, you know, has been some progress that is, you know, being made on that front. Building inspector's been kept in the loop on this. You know, there's been some back and forth. You know, why don't we have Andrew? Do you want to, I guess, update the board on this? And then we can ask Gary if he has any questions?
Sure. We got Gary's questions passed up from the days, so I have responses that I could read to the board if you like.
Sure.
Okay. Gary was asking, when will the work be done? Regarding the Patillo Dry Hydrant, Nanini and Callahan were out there. They should complete the dry hydrant construction by early next week. Weston and Sampson was out, and they submitted their draft report to NEMA, which is under review. NEMA anticipates the Patillo pool being filled, water circulated, chlorinated, and filtered in the pool by early November. Gary asked, have you satisfied the village's requirement for the backflow prevention device? NEMA is reviewing Colliers Engineering Designs' plans to replace the water connections from the village main, adding those backflow preventers, metering and replacing 2,000 feet of water mains and services throughout the campus buildings. Basically, what they're going to do is they're going to completely replace the water services to the existing buildings in the campus. What we think we can do is we can get that work done in about a year, designed and permitted. We want to get it done in advance of the municipality putting in the water main down, Main Street down to Academy. We think we can do it quicker and get that done. That way, when the water becomes available from the municipality, we'll hook it up, and we won't have the leaking problems that we've had for so long. So their primary directive is to eliminate the leaks. And we can do that now, so... Let me see. This would be a permanent replacement to the connection at the municipal system. Temporary dry hydrant would be removed from Patillo Hall. At that time, there'd be no need for it. The pool is just a temporary holding tank. When do you anticipate having fire department test the system and sign off regarding... That's reflecting back to the dry hydrant. We anticipate having the fire department test the... We anticipate inviting the fire department to test the dry hydrant in early November, when it's completed. Gary also asked, has this been presented to the village water department? Our water department lead, Joe Awold, spoke with Mike Trainer regarding Niners' plans for the utility replacement. Mike said he was struggling to get everybody to agree on updating the system, the municipal system outside of our property. He said he's not getting any response from the school. He'd like us to help get people to the table so they can get this agreed to before the next grants cycle comes around in the spring of 2026. Wants to be able to get... He wants to be able to get this paid for, partially by the grants, anyway. Gary asked, have you been in contact with Orange County Health Department regarding review and approval of the water main replacement? The answer is no. We don't have the plans completed yet. Once our plans are done, plans, profiles, reports, and applications, we'll get that all over to the health department for their review. And then, when can I expect the building permit application to be filed for the work? And of course, after the approvals are gained, they'll be in to look for those approvals for that building department permit. That's all I got now.
Do you have anything to add, Gary?
My one issue is with the backflow preventer or the water supply to fill the pool. There's a couple of different backflow preventers that need to be installed. The one on a utility main system they're doing, but they also need one on a water supply going to the pool. I didn't hear that addressed.
Right now, we're not planning on putting water backflow preventers in the buildings right now. We don't know that that's required right now. Right now, we're looking to put two main backflow preventers to prevent anything leaving the campus from contaminating the municipal supply. There is an air gap at the pool. The filler pipe that's there now is so many inches above the water level that that air gap serves as a backflow preventer. That's what's there now for the fill.
And is Mike Trainer fine with that?
I haven't asked him.
Well, he needs to be involved, please.
We can ask him.
Okay. I mean, so it sounds like that's the one missing
Link.
piece here is that. But everything else seems to be... I mean, certainly on the grant front, yeah. I know that, you know, the town and the village, certainly if the school district is willing, would like them to participate in this intermunicipal grant program because we can get up a sizable amount of the funding in order to, you know, upsize the water mains, which are needed, you know, in order to provide adequate, you know, you know, fire flow to certain school buildings as well as other commercial buildings. So we definitely, I mean, I know the town and the village are kind of like united on this. But we need... It would be great to have all parties involved. So we'll certainly, you know, endeavor to get, you know... Hopefully, we can get the school district to go along and to work with us on that. But we're still, I mean, we're in the beginning of this. So, you know, I'm sure we'll continue to have additional discussions, you know, concerning this. Any other questions from the board?
Andrew, how many gallons has our pool... How many gallons does our pool hold?
About 120, 120,000.
120,000?
Yeah.
Is it possible of the questions that Mr. Vincent sent to you? I know you're going to reply to an email. Perhaps you could include the entire town board?
Oh, sure. I have all the responses I read.
Okay. Just make sure we get it too, because I'm writing as fast as I can, but...
No, I'll get them to supervisor and he can distribute absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. So then, I guess at this point, I mean, certainly, we're not going to... When do we want to come back on this?
Josh, didn't we discuss the last time that the purpose of the public hearing was for an ameliorated difficulty?
Yes.
And that the continued public hearing was really unnecessary to the initial reason for the public hearing?
Thank you for reminding me, yes. And I think you had raised that as well, so I guess...
What I had suggested was that perhaps, you know, we have a schedule, which it certainly sounds that Andrew has prepared at least a preliminary one. And that would be the part of an agreement, for instance, that could be binding on NEMA, that there's taking certain steps in this regard. And if that's acceptable, then I think at that point that this hearing could be closed, reopen in the future if necessary, based on, you know, the conditions at that time. But I think, to your point, Ms. Evelyn raised that, you know, the original purpose of the hearing was in connection with an unsafe factor that has been since addressed. And there's little point in continuing to keep this particular hearing open because even if you had a recalcitrant respondent, which we do not have, but even if you did, you know, you could, you're not in a position to take any further action on the original purpose of the hearing because that's actually already been resolved. So my suggestion is that perhaps, like, the board hold the hearing over to December, and which would allow us, if the board would authorize us to prepare an agreement with NEMA, you could consider that agreement at that time. If you authorize the agreement, you could then close the hearing, and then you would have a framework for all these important upgrades that are being made at NEMA in light of all of the rest of the work that they're doing out there now.
Mr. Vincent?
I'd be fine with that.
One fewer nights that you would have to go out, Mr. Vincent.
He's the building inspector, so we ask those questions.
And you know who he is.
Let me, let's see. Because I know there's possibility of looking at diminishing one, you know, taking away one meeting in December. I know there's based on... Well, I'm just saying, we should schedule this for the beginning of the month because what happens is as we get towards the end, like, people end up, so...
Okay. What do you think?
I would... So it looks like December 9th is our first meeting, so I would say maybe we do it on December 9th. So let's make a motion to adjourn the public... The hearing until Tuesday, December 9th. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Evelyn Reyes?
Yes.
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 And just so the board is clear, like, I would go ahead and work with NEMA on an agreement, as well as with Andrew from Colliers, on, and potentially have that before you
Of course.
at that time.
Yeah, that's... I would ask Andrew that we talk about this... Andrew Lenson, that we talk about this offline, giving an agreement in place so we could just move this to a different stage of this situation.
Sure.
Okay.
Josh, were you taking any public notice during this?
Oh, sorry.
No, it's not a public hearing for that purpose. This is a hearing on compliance issues only.
Okay. Okay. So then, moving on to agenda items. All right. So first up, we have the Ice House dedication letter. So, you know, I don't know that we're necessarily going to act on this tonight, but basically, here's the situation. We have all games and decorations, holiday decorations, and all the things that have made the Ice House look so nice that have been provided by, you know, Elizabeth. And typically, the town is supposed to accept certain gifts. In this case, it's a... I guess the open question here, Dominic, is like, if some of these things, which are like, I would almost call like de minimis, like the value of like a used board game, right? Is that something that the town board's going to be getting into valuing and accepting as a gift? You know, like, how do we go about doing this? Like, is it... Because there's really, I mean, like, we'd have to... There's how many games? Dozens and dozens of games. There's decorations. There's a ping pong table. There's tables and chairs. There's different things, and right? And so obviously, the town wants to accept these, so, or be able to store them because they got to come out of the Ice House during climate weather and go onto town property. So how do we go about doing that?
I think you could accept the donation that is being offered and provide that it be maintained and handled by the recreation department. The town has, I mean, you said, you know...
Gotcha. So we just say all of the, you know, all of the items, you know, board games, you know, like miscellaneous items that are currently in the Ice House that have been donated by, you know, Elizabeth, you know, Bruski, that, you know, we accept them, and it would be under the care of the rec department?
Yes. And, I mean, she's here, you can clarify, but I think everything is being donated, correctly?
Yeah, everything is being donated. The only stipulation I had was if the Ice House, for whatever reason, ceases to exist in the future, and there's no home to give these things back to the community in Cornwall, I would like the opportunity to be able to pursue donations outside of the community to Girl's Club, to the Armory and New World, wherever somebody might be willing to take them for the intended purpose that they were purchased for. That's it. That's something I truly care about. And also, being able to maintain them. So if a game breaks right now, I can just pause it by anyone. Don't have to ask anyone permission. So I would hope that I could continue to maintain and own that inventory and not let you know when something new comes in and how, so it's important.
I think that that's reasonable.
Sure.
I mean, certainly, like, the town could entertain that request in the future if, for some reason, the Ice House ceases to exist and/or these places needed another home. And then, I think that the... Given the nature of the donation in the first place, I'm sure that the town would listen to Elizabeth and her recommendations as to a potential future home if the Ice House wasn't a good home for them anymore.
Gotcha. Okay. So then, I guess what I would do is I would ask the board to accept Elizabeth Yononi's generous gift of items that are associated with the Ice House. And they would go under the care of the rec department, and that also the... We created that committee, the volunteer committee, as well. And I think we'd also like that volunteer committee to be able to help care for those items and, you know, use those items as needed as well, as part of this. And in the event that the Ice House ceases to exist, that the town would consider returning the items under the care of Elizabeth Yononi. Can I get a motion to...
Just for clarification?
Yes.
When I hear the Ice House ceases to exist, it exists, right? It's there as a physical structure. So what I'm saying, like, what's going to happen to it? You mean, as far as the program ceases to exist?
Yeah, but I tell social clubs. Because I think we just put it under that umbrella.
Okay. Just the way that it's being said, it's like, the Ice House is still there.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, totally agree.
I just think in this context, they have a nomenclature referring to it as the Ice House.
Right, but it does exist.
The social club is the interior that they've all donated.
Right, and that's what... Yes, exactly. But it's an Ice House. I don't know how it has anything to do with it. First of all, thank you for your letter because this really helps, you know, clarify a lot of things, and I do appreciate everything that you're doing. The one thing I'd like to talk about, if I could just briefly, is the lights. I really like to maybe get a timer or something because that was a very dark area. You had nocturnal living organisms that were there, and it's lit up all night. And during the day, it's lit up, so maybe we could talk about putting some kind of a timer on it? Is that...
There are timers on it right now for the main lights, but what happened was the feedback we were receiving from people that walk in the park, like, at this rate of times, especially early in the morning, who really appreciated having that light. They felt safer. So I was like, oh, we'll just keep the string lights out. They were honestly, were only supposed to be up there for a week.
Oh, all right.
But we kept them because they seemed to make people happy. They were easy to run stairs because they're aerial, and we don't have any wires in ground anywhere else. And so when we wanted to run, like, wires to the woods and stuff, having that suspended.
Yeah.
I consulted with Tom about it. He had probably burying wires.
Exactly. Good job.
And stuff like that. So it was, it kind of served a dual purpose. But, I mean, it doesn't... I'll owe the time, and whatever hours he tells me from how he wants to time his set.
Right, right. I just, I just think, I'm also energy conscious. I know it sounds silly, but it's like, I see things on during the day. I'm like, what? You know, like, let's try to be a little mindful. So I would appreciate, that would be great. I mean, you did a great job. I've gone and walked through it a couple times. And I appreciate your time and effort. I see you out there cleaning things and moving along in the group, so thank you.
So have we talked to Tom in reference to storing? Or, because I know it's going to the rec department, but the rec department's going to come up to Tom and say, hey, you know, we need X, Y, and Z stored in, like, new buildings, which we have no room for. So, you know, I would highly recommend to make sure that's worked out very closely with the highways.
We were in, and that was his idea for the dedication letter, so I followed his lead on that. I believe that he's... You're okay with the pool house?
I think Phil has recommended pool house, so...
Yeah.
Pool house?
And he asked for you to put in air...
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, he asked for you to do containers. It could get a little moisture in there and stuff like that instead of boxes, so... Any other recommendations you have? I'll just...
Yeah, because you know the Ice House is going to have extended work done too, probably sometime in the springtime. And you and I talked about that already before, early on. And, you know, so all that stuff has come out when the Ice House is getting renovated.
Well, it's coming up this week. The last day of the Ice House is Sunday. You guys have been informed because we're transitioning into the holiday season where we're preparing, we're teaching seasons. So, and we have a huge workload because I'm doing the village as well. So I'm quietly, it's gonna stay dark, and I'm going to see holiday decorations prematurely, but I will be starting with the Riverlight first and then moving on into the village probably the second week of November, and then get ready for that for Thanksgiving.
And again, I agree with, you know, Councilwoman Scott. It's that all I hear from the public is how messy of the drought that you have been dealing with the Ice House. But, you know, it's well, make sure that you're aware that, you know, we have to make sure stuff is stored properly, you know, during, whenever you're not using it, and also during the renovation time.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I've communicated to the public as well on our socials that we don't know when it's reopening. If there's a delay in Ice House renovation, which because the timelines aren't specifically clear right now, then the Ice House might reopen in spring if everyone welcomes it. If you guys are under construction in the spring, you know, we don't know. We hope that it comes back. So I've kind of kept it open-ended so that we can keep things flowing and there's no real expectations that are stacked around. Everything's kind of moving right now, so...
And the purpose I reached out to you is that in March, we had a number of residents And, and the purpose I reached out to you is that in March, we had a number of residents that had come forward to the town board of a concern about the ice house, which to them is a historical structure, um, about it being altered. And, um, there was a shock when the mural came up and, and, and everything. So, that's why I was really reaching out to you to say, listen, I think, yes, social media is great, but there's also people who don't have social media.
Yeah.
And, and I just think sometimes we just have to have that meeting of the minds and understand, you know, where you're coming from.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't, I'm pretty social media, I create the ice house Instagram, so I could communicate with the families that were utilizing the space, so they can see where the games were coming and learn about the history as well. Even their platform to tell, to tell the story with the ice house. I thought that was really important. Um, so that you were clear, the back wall, when I started, I started around the fourth of July. And when I was string, putting up the string lights for the art gallery, there was very explicit graffiti that I ended up having to cover with American flag. Um, and then when I took down that flag, I sent pictures to Josh and I was like, like, you can leave it? Pretend it's not there and walk away, or I could paint the wall black with chalkboard paint. And the idea was that we could do some kind of temporary mural and if someone wanted to, like, come in and do whatever they wanted to do from a graffiti standpoint, that is chalkboard paint, we can easily, you know, throw it away. And then knowing that the ice house is gonna get renovated, it was always just going to be temporary. So, I've never done anything in that space that would take it, that, that transformed it so that it's not to its roots. Everything is temporary, completely temporary, can get taken down and without any damage. But the whole point was to always pay respect to its history. And I'm, that's really important to me that the community knows that.
Sure.
I did insane, when I say insane amount of research, I am the expert now, um, for, for, um, the ice house and the Park family and, uh, everything else, which is, which is awesome. I have a, I have a, I fell in love with the park from this project and it, it, I, I really love that space, so.
Well, kind of keep my cur- my curiosity is that I, when I, as our duty, we have to do what's called a warrant. You look over the bills and it was like an eleven hundred dollar bill for the mural. And I was like, what are we doing? No, no, no. So, what I'm saying is, that's what kind of tipped me off of what's, what's going on. Um, because we are using, you know, taxpayer money for that, um, and.
But that wasn't my, I pa- I painted the wall black. I scraped that wall.
My gosh.
The whole thing, that was not done from, and then what happened was, because it was a partnership with recreation. And my understanding is recreation does have discretionary spending over their, their budget for programming. And it was a community effort where we did have a party where the children painted and were part of, part of that mural. We originally don't let them paint on the wall and then we decided that visually, yeah, exactly the kind of the laughter we're getting here. It might not work like we're envisioning, so the alternative was kind of do it how we did it. And that was a recreation program and it was children specific. So, um, I think, again, that was run through recreation. Um, that wasn't something I specifically.
Well, now, now you clarified that too. Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that.
Is there anything else before we approve the request?
Yeah, I just wanna.
Thank you.
Say how much I appreciate your initiative.
Yeah.
And I, I really like how it's evolved over time where, um, the committee was created and there's this really nice flow of communication between buildings and grounds and the rec department. I think, um, you know, in the beginning, it was a bit of a learning curve for everyone in terms of how to utilize public spaces um, and coordinate with public, public entities. But I think you guys are doing a great job. It is beautiful space. You, you do very, very well with very little. And, you know, the community has had a really positive response, so. Um, but I appreciate you taking the time to, to be on that learning curve with us. Because it is a public building and there has to be communication with the public officials that are in charge. And sometimes like when you're doing something really good, you forget that there's, there's this other piece of it that no one would ever think about. Um, and I think that almost speaks to how well our rec department and our buildings and grounds work because they're, they're pretty seamless and, um, things are always in order. So, it's, I'm really glad that you guys are, are becoming a part of that and now we have a rec committee so we can get even bigger from here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for helping us get it together and for everyone being so, so supportive. I mean, sometimes things just happen and this was one of those things that honestly, it just happened so quick. There was, it wasn't real planning and those consequences that were, we have a vibe of that personally. That's kind of how it works, how it functioned. And, you know, we wouldn't have been able to do it if we had a ton of blue blocks in our way and probably didn't have a partnership or recreation. And Josh was just like, no, leave that graffiti. You know, like, it, it took a lot of people saying yes, um, people having a lot of confidence in each other and work wise. It, it really worked out and it wasn't just me. There was a lot of people that made it happen. Some kind of partnerships. Um, and again, if anyone hasn't read that formal local article, like, I keep pointing back to that because it does call out the efforts of the community and we do call it a true community effort because that's what it is. And it is a reflection of our community, um, not only from an effort standpoint, but the fact that we can have something like that that's not managed, where there's not a physical person and there's not games floating in the pond and there's not major destruction and all this crazy stuff happening that everyone, after the first week, it started unfolding. Everyone was scaring me like, oh my god, where we live is a bunch of, a bunch of, a bunch of animals. But, um, it's, it's been amazing how respectful the community is. And it's an incredible reflection of the quality of our community as a whole. And I think that's part of the magic of, of the space. And I couldn't be prouder to be part of a project like that and put the effort into it, um, because, because of that, so, thank you all.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess just real quick, I mean, you know, again, the, like she said, um, I didn't feel that this graffiti and just god knows what else was in there was reflective of the history. And actually what we brought it to, if you go back and look at the history, it was supposed to be a recreational space for the community. Not a place that, that was desolate and disgusting and looked like it was in like a, you know, like some hellhole. And so I think we've kind of brought it to where it needs to be. And so, I also think we should, um, you know, thank Phyllis, um, Buffy and Eileen has been involved in this. And Mrs. Pa- you know, Michelle Powell. I'm, I'm used to calling you Mrs. Powell because, you know, you had everyone's.
Always.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But I think, I think they deserve some thanks too, because they've been involved in this. And so I guess, um, let's, uh, we gotta get back to approving this, so can I get a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. McFarlane.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Ellen Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rossi.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so next, we have, um, holiday decorations. Okay, so let's, let's just go through this. And we spoke about this in the previous, uh, you know, earlier meeting as well. The town got this grant from Senator Sefus and it was for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And you have to spend the money to get reimbursed. And we've gotten reimbursed for everything but about twelve thousand dollars. And so the state, even though this grant goes back to twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, has said, and we had to do paperwork along the way this year, and they've said that we can, um, spend another twelve thousand dollars and get reimbursed. Part of the reason why we have the additional funds is because the state, um, disallowed a bunch of the original spending that was done just on like flowers and landscaping and other things. The state didn't consider that to be reimbursable. So, we had to go back. And actually, um, some of the snowflakes and the electrical wiring that we did last year, the state accepted. Um, and that took the place of some of the disallowed expenses, which is how we did the original, what was it? Fifteen or seventeen poles we did last year. So, we have an additional twelve thousand dollars to get reimbursed. I, you know, I'm proposing, you know, to the board that let's get reimbursed for this last bit of money. Let's just get, you know, let's do it, um, and then let's get reimbursed and let's get it done. You know, they've, they've been pretty quick to pay once we submit on this.
So, I have a.
And so, yes.
So, the, um, location where these poles are not gonna be in front of the residential, um.
Yes, they're, they're, they're going to be, um, and my understanding is that we're going to move them down further, what, closer of, uh, Buffy.
The pond.
The pond, yes.
Time holds the pond.
Yeah.
Five in front of the park is the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
People across the street from pond are okay with this? People who live there, are people who live across the street too? There are no poles directly from the pond, across from the pond to the homes. I am hundred percent sure. So, from the stretch where the tennis courts are, right that? If we keep going, I walk that every day, there are no poles.
Right.
So, the poles Buffy's talking about is further this way, so, um.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm not visualizing what you're talking about.
There are no, there are no poles directly.
In the residence yards, they're not on the sidewalk side.
They're on the residence, right? They're in front of residence homes.
So, it hit the light pieces away from the house.
That's right. So, it's the same problem that the people.
So, so that, that's where they, so we, we have three options, right? So, we have the, continue on the snowflakes from, uh, Main Street where they currently are. Or do the traffic circle. And so, that's an option as well. Or, I mean, my goal here is not to have snowflakes in front of people's homes. So, we have, there are spots that are in front of, say, Twins, in front of the Cornwall Business Center. Those are about, what, a hundred feet away, two hundred feet away. So, we have options. But we know that the public does not, at least the homeowners do not want to have the snowflakes directly in front of their homes.
There's residents who are next to Twins.
So, they either have to be around the traffic circle, that we have poles there. Or they have to be like in front of, you know, CVS, in front of, but if you, so, so basically on Quaker, you have, there's what? Four or five homes? We're not putting them there. We've, you know, the residents do not want them there. But if you go further up in front of the new Cornwall Market and Collective, you could put one there.
There are a lot of offices there.
You have another one in front of, what is that, uh, Ten Elm Street, it's the Cornwall Business Center. You could put one there. We have five poles. And so I think what I'm asking for is for the board to authorize, um, five snowflakes. They cannot go in front of the homes of residents. They gotta go like either the traffic circle or they have to be dispersed, um, in some manner.
I think traffic circle would be a good place.
Yeah, I mean, originally that, that was part of the original. That was part of the original was to put some up around the traffic circle.
We do have some utility poles that they're unattractive right now, right? The one across from Chase Bank and the one right next to this.
If there's, each pole is gonna be a thousand dollars?
Yes.
Well, a thousand dollars for the electrical, so basically what we were proposing to.
And how much is like the start to finish each pole?
So, roughly, um, let me just pull this up. So, we've got the, let me just pull this up here. So, we have five poles is five thousand dollars. It's deducted from the twelve thousand dollars that we can submit to the state for reimbursement. And then, we have, let me just pull this up here. So, there's another approximately twenty-five hundred dollars in snowflakes, for about five snowflakes, right? So, now you're up to seventy-five hundred dollars and you get the five poles. And so then that then leaves another five thousand dollars.
Wow, about four thousand dollars.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, about four thousand dollars.
Not including shipping and freight and. Yeah, I was gonna say taxes. That doesn't include those things.
It does.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it does. So, that includes shipping and freight. We don't have to, um, pay shipping and freight on, you know, RPC Electric, which is coming at the lowest bid. And then the last part of this, um, in order to get to that, because we wanna spend this out and get this grant closed down so we can get the final tranche of reimbursement, is, there's one more beautification item. And we have two options for this. We can either, so there is a, uh, a decoration for Riverlight Park. That the state has, and we've already asked them about this. Uh, this would be a, a twenty-two foot floating Christmas tree. That would go into Ring's Pond and that would be part of the holiday decorations. And that would go into this and then we would submit it to the state and we would get, you know, our full reimbursement back and then we'd close out. We've definitely able to.
Is this gonna have a lights on it?
Yes, it does, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be a lighted Christmas tree and.
I, I understand, but it's like, it's.
Yeah.
Okay, just asking, don't know what kind of tree it is.
You remember this from last year? We spoke about this last year.
Yeah, yeah, I do remember, but I, I'm just asking if it's got lights on it.
Yes.
A floating Christmas tree.
Yes.
Staked into the little.
Yes, it go- it goes into the pond. I mean, Tommy, you've spoken.
I thought we decided last year that this was not a good use of money, like dollar for dollar with the item that's proposed. We, I thought we had a pretty.
We had said that.
Unfortunately lengthy discussion.
Because we didn't have the funds to get, so we're paying for snowflakes and this gets added to our. And so this goes to the state and we get reimbursed.
I understand. I think what the discussion was is that we thought it wasn't a very good value for the price. That the price of four thousand dollars is a really expensive lighting decoration. Um, the, the snowflakes are, you know. We can all, the poles, we could retrofit for American flags if we wanted to in Fourth of July if we got another grant down the road or something like that. And, but, so there's a use that can come out of the fitting out these poles with electricity. But I, I, I do remember discussing these trees and coming to the conclusion that they were not a good value. And I'm also, and, and maybe I didn't bring this up last year, but I am concerned about how this tree will interplay with the menorah that is installed to reflect on the pond.
That's actually being moved. The rabbi has proposed that we move that menorah to another location. And so that is something that I'm just, I'm just telling you. So, that's actually something he would like to talk about. So, that's actually gonna be.
Or maybe until we know fully that answer to that question, we can table the tree.
Uh, when is the deadline for this? Could we just go, have one week to do a little bit of research? Because this, what, and maintenance wise, Tommy, this, the, the lake is gonna be frozen. So, I, I don't know, this is gonna be floating on the, um, pond, right? I, I'm not in favor of, of putting that.
I feel like December, the pond isn't frozen.
Yeah, that's not. We have it in our circle. We, we will gather.
It froze in December? Oh.
I don't know. I, I, we discussed this last year. I just don't think it's.
Yeah, I mean, we did have the discussion with the maker of this, who said that that wouldn't be a concern, that they've obviously dealt with this with every other municipality they've sold one to. So, the, the, the freezing isn't necessarily.
Is this something you can just, uh, uh, kind of put it away once the season is over?
Oh, no, this, this would last for like ten years or more. I mean, this isn't like a cheapo, a cheapo thing, yeah.
The maintenance, kind of like putting it away, it requires two, three people to fold it or put it together.
Does it come, come from pieces?
Three hundred pounds.
Three hundred pounds? Three hundred pounds?
It folds down to like three, I don't know, I think what you said was twenty-two feet, folds down into like three sections.
It's a solid, solid tree, so.
Okay, maybe it's worth more than that.
No, it's not. It's, it's not a, I, I, I mean, you know.
I just think that area is such a beautiful, serene, peaceful place. And we're just gonna, ah, like light it up. I, I'm afraid it's starting to look a little, I don't know why. I, it's hard to say this. It's starting to look a little like commercialized and, and that's not the spirit, like, of, of our town and, and what that area is. I, I just am not in favor of putting a floating Christmas tree in the middle of our pond. I'm just not.
Do you think that, is it, is it untimely to, to revisit this? Um, after we know which poles we've identified or to move forward? I feel like we don't, I don't usually say this, but I do feel like I don't have enough information.
Right, we don't.
I apologize. I'm happy to speak offline with anyone that has proposed this or knows more.
Yeah, I mean, look, I would, I would say that this is.
Something like that or early in the morning sometime next week, some, anything, but I apologize. I do think that.
I would say then what I would suggest, because this has been brought by, um, the.
Rec department?
The rec department and, you know, um, the Main Street Committee and the folks involved in the Ice House think this is a good idea and they brought this, this was brought back. We have the money to spend. So, really, quite frankly, if we don't do this, then I would say let's get more snowflakes. So, that's.
I think uniformity looks less commercialized.
I think it's, it's. I just think it's such a beautiful, serene area and.
I don't know, everyone liked the ducks. So, people do like things on the pond. The ducks were a hit.
But they weren't floating and glaring out at you at night. That's the difference. I think I also agree with Karen. I just needed maybe a day or two extra to.
Well, I would, this is what I would say.
Yeah.
Reach out because again, this is, I have far, you know, no offense, but, you know, the supervisor, you see my desk, like, item one hundred on my desk is like the floating Christmas tree. So, certainly, I want this to happen, but again, other people, you know, have, have brought this to the town board. And so I would just suggest that you talk to them, um, about it. I'm always supportive of decorating our town and making it beautiful for the holidays. So, when people come to me, I usually say yes, because I, you know, want our town to look nice. And I think that, you know, the people bringing it to us have done a good job. And so, you know, I would say talk to them. As far as the menorah, yeah, there is gonna be a discussion because, um, the rabbi would like to move it from the pond to another location. And we're actually gonna be, um, you know, walking, I think, Tommy, you're with us to try to find another location because they would like to find another location and even, you know, um, provide for a, a new menorah too. So, there is talk of moving it. They're just finding us just not working out of it.
I know, it's a very.
And their opinion, so.
The nativity scene too, that was put in the main, because where's that going? Like, there's, there's like, this, this is all.
Just because you're not aware of where the nativity's going, we've been talking behind the scenes about it. And so the people, well, yes, because, you know, the town supervisor works with the rec department and the groups and the day-to-day running of the town, which is my job.
Right, but you're all.
And so, I didn't think it was necessary to have a lengthy discussion on where the nativity was gonna go because we, we intended to have it there. And so, nothing's changing. In fact, we've been replacing it piece by piece. It had been decades since it had been replaced. It had fallen into disrepair and we decided to work with locals who are very generous to provide new pieces of the nativity. And so that will be going back in the same location.
Okay, you clarified that.
Yes.
It's also in a, um, where I'm online every day that we're doing on, it did call out. Can I ask a quick question? Could the money, rather than being spent seasonally, could it be put to better use for something more permanent? Do you have to spend it on decoration?
We'll, we'll, we'll get back to that when we get to, I mean, right now, we're not, you know, this isn't public comment right now, so. We'll, um. So, yeah, okay, so, so it sounds like we're going to, we're gonna table the Christmas tree for now because it sounds like we need to table it. Um, you know, while the other board members, um, talk to the folks that are.
Tim, what are your thoughts on the Christmas tree?
I, I agree with you guys. I think we need to find more information about the Christmas tree. I've kind of a little way to go with the story, you know, I have a good palette, you know, uh, I thought of that. Plus, you know, I'm tired of that new menorah, you know, I, you know, could take the money, put it towards that.
I think menorahs are being bought by the rabbi.
So, the Christmas tree, we only have a lot of Christmas decorations.
Yeah, replacement.
And with that activity, stuff going on at Ice House.
Right, a lot of moving parts that we are trying to figure out.
All right.
No pun intended.
So, you're not gonna table the Christmas tree?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, that's fine. I mean, I think we can come back to the, um.
So, are we approving the?
Yeah, no, I, I do think we should, you know, move forward on the, um, the five poles, um, and the snowflakes. And then we can come back and we can talk about what other, if there is something more permanent, um, you know, again, the state does not want to fund, um, plants and flowers and shrubs and those things. They don't deem those to be permanent, unless it's part of a overall like makeover that's tied to a project. And I guess I, I would also just add too, we do have the Cornwall Connector Trail coming. Um, in terms of buying like more benches and more street furniture and all that stuff, before we, we really get into doing any of that more permanent stuff, we have to get through our marketing and branding and wayfinding initiative because that is currently, um, you may have seen that we put that out to bid. And we need to hire a firm because they're gonna work with the town and the village to come up with, you know, like a, like a branding look for both. And before we just go and start buying like, you know, really permanent things that are gonna last, we wanna make sure that we have like a common design theme as far as like that type of stuff. So, I guess, I guess what I would ask is that if the town board would approve the, the five poles and the five snowflakes, will come, you know, but those items have to be put up, um, outside of an area that are going to impact our residents. So, so it's gotta go in the traffic circle or it's gotta go up by like CVS in the area. We don't wanna put them in front of like Quaker and in front of areas where there's going to be homes that could be.
I feel like CVS is so, uh, like polluted already. I can't imagine.
I still went from.
I can't imagine it having any kind of beautification impact there. That's just my opinion.
Oh, look, I mean, I, I don't really wanna pick the pole. And again, I, I mean, this level of detail, in my mind, like, let's.
They're just throwing out ideas.
Let's give instructions, right? Like, we don't want them near things. I mean, we order it and then we decide on the poles based on what, like.
I think the circles, the circle.
Karen, I, I, I agree with you.
Circle is a good idea.
No, Karen, I, I agree.
I feel like I'm being particularly picky tonight and I don't mean to be. I apologize.
No, I, I agree with you. I.
The circle.
I don't necessarily wanna get involved either in sorting through poll numbers myself. So, I, I, I would ask that, you know, the committee that wants to propose the five poles and snowflakes will go out and. You know, the committee that wants to propose the five poles and snowflakes will go out and find poles that are gonna make sense.
Just put them in the circle, I think.
They identified what, twenty-two poles overall?
Please simplify this and put them in the circle.
Yes, I mean.
Okay, there, we identified all the poles within the town that go from CBS scans, we have all the way toward the silver. There are five poles that, there's two in the traffic circle, one on each side, that work for this, and also highlight the new bridge. And, um, and then also, um, ones that would be away from the house would be where twins used to be, there, which is not by CBS. That's the one, otherwise, um, we would continue down from where we stopped, which is by the, um, bus stop part. And going down, you know, through the air, continue down towards, um, it's not by any houses. Uh, we have, we were planning polls, Bubby and I have walked this multiple times, we did all the poll numbers for Tom and stuff like that, and we will work on that tomorrow.
I just think, you know, we've had a lot of residents complain about the light pollution in that area, either by twins, it's, there is a house right next to it. So I'm, I'm, I'm saying, please keep them away from that area, the circle would be more appropriate.
Circle would be nice.
The seventeen that are up, I mean, there's tons that are across from housing, are there?
Yes, but this is a very sensitive area, because we're dealing with the streetlights that are from the, from the parking.
Hazen there across, there's houses there that, on, on, that's a hazen, snowflakes across from them.
Again, I, I think that, you know, you need to be mindful, because there were people who came forward, and they don't want them in that area.
Well, aren't they, those are the people that live near the plaza though?
I was talking more to them by the pond and where there's, across from the pond.
Okay. Right.
We don't know, we start putting them up, what's gonna happen, that's the, that concerns me.
I mean, look, so, so, so it sounds like, all right, we're belaboring the pole thing, I think we can approve poles, put them in places where there's gonna be no impact. And over the course of a year, if we choose to revisit this, yeah, we're gonna have to go to house by house to talk to people to see if they wanna have, you know, if we're gonna continue on, but.
Cause they live it.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's what I'm saying, so I think, I think like, like the traffic circle, um.
Okay, so we just need two for the traffic circle, so let's just approve two for the traffic circle.
Let's do all five, I'm sure we can find, I'm sure we can find five poles.
How many poles on the circle? Do five and you can find. With those parameters?
Yeah, I mean, five, five with the parameters.
Okay.
And goals.
Okay.
I can think of there's at least four, there's four, I think.
There's four, I think.
Right in the circles, from, perfect.
Okay.
I think circle would be nice.
I think the circles where you start.
The circle's lovely.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, then I, I will approve it.
Make a motion?
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve RPC Electric for one thousand per pole for a total of five poles? And to also approve the purchase of the snowflakes for twenty-five hundred dollars. Under the conditions that they go on, under the parameters that we were just discussing, they have to be away from homes and not, you know, impacting residents that, that live, um, that live next to it.
So moved.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
I'm gonna vote yes, but I wanna explain, um, you know, we've been doing our budget meetings and, and this has been difficult, because when I'm thinking about we're raising people's taxes and then we're gonna go spend more money, and I know it's part of the grant. There's a balance here, and I really think that we together need to start thinking about that when we go to spend, uh, you know, large sums of money on, you know, projects like this. There is a financial impact and we need to be much more mindful, I think, and considerate of that, so I will vote yes for your five.
Virginia, this is part of the grant, my dear.
Uh, my dear, it's still taxpayer money, it's ta, grant money comes from taxpayers, it's not imaginary money. And we have to pay out the money first.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike O'Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes, um, okay, next we have the Route thirty-two left lane, or left turn lane request, um, as well as a Route nine W sightline changes. So I guess, I guess we'll get into the Route thirty-two request, um, I think you've seen the, uh, the letter from Crystal. In high school, I lived on Hollerin Road, and I can say that even back in the late nineties, it was a dangerous, yeah, it's, it's tough.
It's a tougher, you're right.
And so, and I know, um, Tim and I spoke about this earlier, Karen and I spoke about this as well, um, look, I don't know if the state's gonna listen to us, it's state road. However, the way that it starts is if the town, um, the town has to make the request, the resident can't do it. Basically, we had a resident reach out and the state basically said that we have to make that appeal directly to, um, you know, the regional DOT office. What I'm not sure about is, is this gonna be similar to when we do like the speed zone, you know, with the speed reduction request, where we gotta pass resolution, it goes to the county. You know, the county commissioner of public works, they gotta do something, and then it goes up, they gotta do a traffic study, like, I think we gotta figure out if we intend to do this, what's, like, what's the flow? Or is it just a matter of, I mean, if you look at that, what was it, the Jackson, the, uh, Jackson Avenue and corner of Jackson and ninety-four, I mean, that took what, fatalities, severe accidents? Many, many years of advocacy to get that.
It's, it's light.
Yeah.
Well, just about writing a letter, right?
But, you know.
No, I mean, we could do that as a minimum, but is there another process to this?
There's no other process, it's the DOT's road, and you can make the request, and Crystal is correct that the request has to come from the town.
Okay.
So, one of the things I'd like to put on that is that, and I know prior to my retirement from parabatic, from New Windsor. I've been involved with a fatality that, well, a doctor was killed, I was sent, a good, well-known doctor from Sanders, was killed because he stopped. And a car rammed him because he was in the, uh, passing, actually the lanes, and, uh, to make the turn. Anyway, uh, he was, you know, didn't survive, that was fatal, and I, I got pushed off to another car, so the back of the medic. But with that said, it's that there's been numerous accidents at that scene and stuff, so one of the things I like to do is not only talk to chief government, but also talk to chief bigs and from New Windsor, you know, that's. And it kinda gives them a database, that's what we have, we have to do with, um, I had to do that with, uh, the nearest DOT, uh, for the cutouts on ninety-four for Cornwall Social. And to get a bunch of data from Orange County, uh, nine-one-one, and from the local fire departments and stuff. And to indicate that, you know, what was the, you know, the accident ratio and where, where the location from. Because so, uh, you know, try to get that resolved out there, it's very similar, so I just wanna add some data to the letters, what I'm basically getting down to.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think we'll get a, we'll get a letter together and we'll get this.
That's what they wanna see, the state DOT wants to see data. Well, they get a poll too, but they also wanna see it from, they want to see the request, we did a request for, out there, Cornwall Social, plain request, and they came back and said, yeah, this means out there, we need, we need to see data. That's okay, so, you know, did the whole footwork, we got the data for them, and, I mean, I know they could go and get the data themselves, but they wanna see it from us.
Then actually, what I would ask then is maybe, do you wanna just maybe take a shot at putting just like a draft letter together with some of that data? And then you can, and then we, uh, we can go over it, and then we can, you know, run it by the attorney. I mean, it's gonna take a little bit of time, I think, like, we're not gonna be able to get this turned around in, you know, a week. But I think, you know, let's, let's see what data we can get, and let's just get maybe a bare bones draft together that the board can take a look at and we can, you know.
More information that you can share, as part of it, the better, you know, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's helpful for the traffic engineers to have the fa, last five years of data, they go back ten, they'll go back ten, but I would, I would start with the last five years.
That's what it's about, five years.
Any accidents, any tickets, bladder entries, any, any passing school buses, stuff like that.
Yep. 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 That's what I did with, uh, what I did a lot of for the Dums.
And it is difficult to make a left-hand turn.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, coming from.
Yeah, whether you're.
We have a ton of land in Orange Mills, we have a ton of main, main going into Quaker, and it should be definitely one there for Harlem and Biggs.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, that's a bad one.
It's tough enough, it's water.
Well, and then we got Route nine W sightline changes, so have any of you been out to Old West Point Road or something?
Did we get to vote on that, or are you gonna?
You should.
Oh, for sure, okay, yeah, yeah, so.
Just put out a letter.
It'd be a voice vote on authorizing the letter.
Yeah, so if I could get a, the town board authorized sending a letter to DOT to, um, request the Route thirty-two left hand, uh, left turn lane request.
Second. Mr. McCarthy? Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike O'Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes, um, the next part of this is, um, the Route nine W sightline changes, um, I don't know if you've been out on Old West Point Road recently. But, you know, uh, the DOT's been doing work up and down the mountain, and, um, earlier this year, there was an issue there where the median that they were building, I mean, it was well intentioned, they didn't want people rolling over. But it also meant that you couldn't see across the road. And so at that time, you know, there was a number of residents, Tommy and I, Matt Fiscalidi from Scubus's office, we went out there, we took a look, we got DOT involved, and I believe they addressed that part of it. But then, there's still issues when you're trying to pull out, um, and you have cars coming around the turn. If you're in a sedan, um, and not like a truck and you're not off the road, even then it's not great, but if you're in a sedan, you really can't, it's really, it's really tough to see when you're coming around the corner. So when you're gonna like pull out and across, I mean, you can get very easily T-boned. I mean, it's almost, it almost happens every day to, I think, the residents that live on that road, actually, and so I know that, um, the residents on that road, they've been in discussion with, um, if you have to level here. Yeah, Gary Wilhelm, he's been kinda taken the lead on this, um, as he had earlier this year, but, um, DOT's been looking into it. Um, I know Tommy went out there and took a look at it again, I mean, it's a, it's a problem, and so we have to figure out what they can do about it. I, I, I don't know if it's, they've got a, I don't know, thoughts on this, Tommy, I mean, is, is it correctable, I mean.
You should have to cut it back, cause that's, that's the station or the crash bumper.
Yeah. Yeah, there's like a, like a crash bumper, you've probably seen there.
So they're gonna just have to cut it back.
Yeah. So anyway, yeah, but I guess, I, I guess what I would, um, I would also maybe ask that we put, what, put a letter together for this, or a strongly worded, um, email, I mean, they're aware of it, they're working on it. So I guess the question is, you know, do we just let this like play its course out, do we send them a letter too? Okay, letter? So if I could, you know, um.
And if we have any.
Data.
Any data, include the data.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of accidents.
So, all right, if I could get, um, the board's authorization to send DOT a letter, um, requesting them to make this change on Route nine W over by Old West Point Road.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, um, all right, this next one is just, uh, um, we had a resident, he reached out, um, as you know, we do have a coach bus service that runs like. You know, what is it, Sardanewburg, and then it works its way down, um, there's a five corner stop, there's a Route thirty-two stop, I mean, I, I did that for seven years, um, I can, I can tell you that's no fun. You know, but it, it, uh, you know, really shows kind of the transit desert we have over here on this side of the river, unfortunately, but. This gentleman is basically saying, is there a way for the town to maybe advocate, you know, to Coach USA about putting a stop up on, you know, I guess across the road or somewhere in a safer location? So that, cause right now, if you don't have a car or, or an ability to get to Route thirty-two, you're basically having to walk from, let's say you live on Main Street. And you gotta get to the bus to get to the city, you're basically walking from Main Street da, down to Route thirty-two, you're crossing the road in the morning, so I got, but, but this gentleman's asking is. Basically, would we be willing to ask Coach to put a stop? I mean, I don't know what Coach is gonna do, I mean, certainly, um, asking, I don't have an issue with asking, I mean, it's just a matter of like, all right, will the bus stop at Cornwall Plaza?
I would suggest, um, in, in Washingtonville, they actually did get a stop there, um, on the, on, um, West Main Street and two oh eight, that intersection. You might want to reach out to, um, the government and see how, you know, that was done, did they have any role in it? Or did they just get, um, you know, or did Coach decide there was enough ridership to actually support that stop?
I think the one's cause ninety-four is what it amounted.
Yes.
Yeah, kind of Washingtonville, that was good, now New Windsor.
Um, what, did you have any idea what time this is?
So, I mean, basically, well, look, I mean, if you've ever taken this, um.
I haven't, they're early in the morning, they.
Yeah, I mean, this is people going to the city and there's buses, if, if, if you work construction, you're getting a, a four something bus or a five AM bus, and there's no traffic. If you wait till later in the day and you take the bus, well, then all of a sudden there's traffic and it takes you two hours to get from Cornwall to through the tunnel to Port Authority. But it's basically.
I think overall is not a bad idea to.
No, no, I, I, I think, I think certainly we could, we could certainly.
Helping this family, but I don't think it's easy.
I don't think it costs anything to ask.
Yeah.
Ask, asking is free, I mean, it, it, so I think that's.
A plaza would be a good place for it, right?
That's something we can work on.
Because you have a stop and then you use the traffic circle for the bus to turn around.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love.
Traffic waver, back to thirty-two.
Yeah.
All right, so who's gonna be asking, who are gonna be asking?
I'll, I'll reach out for them. Um, okay, so next we have a resolution adopting the benef, uh, benefit assessment districts. Whereas, uh, heretofore, the town of Cornwall held the required annual public hearing on the town's various benefit assessment districts. And whereas after the town board reviewed all of the comments by the public, the public hearing were closed. Now therefore be resolved as follows, the town board does hereby adopt the annual benefit assessment district rules as submitted, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
I guess.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike O'Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. Next we have, um, the resolution, um, scheduling the public hearing for the FY twenty-six preliminary budget. Whereas, the town board of the town of Cornwall is preparing the FY twenty-six budget for the town. Whereas in order for the town board to adopt the FY twenty-six budget, it's necessary for the town board to hold a public hearing on the FY twenty-six preliminary budget. Now therefore be resolved as, as follows, let's pull this, um. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board shall hold a public hearing on the FY twenty-twenty-six preliminary budget on, uh, November, Thursday, November sixth. At seven o'clock PM, two that do notice of the same, including listing of proposed salaries of all elected officials is directed to be given publication and posting. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, to schedule the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike O'Rourke?
Yes.
Mr. Woodhouse?
Yes. So next, we have the resolution for SECA Jackson Avenue Culver replacement project. So, as you know, we got a bridge in New York, capital grant, which is going to pay for the replacement of the Jackson Avenue Culver, as you know, that's a very vital, um. And, look, most people don't even know there's a culvert there, but I can tell you it's, the one that is there is collapsing into the unnamed waterway that is there, and it actually has to be replaced. And so thankfully, that culvert wasn't bad enough disrepair that the state, um, you know, agreed with us and they agreed to pay for its replacement. But as, you know, part of anything, um, the, there's, it's, just like working with FEMA, right, like you gotta do all these things. But thankfully, we've got about one point two million dollars to replace that culvert, and I'm just gonna say, culverts are not cheap. You know, cause nowadays, one, you're not allowed to do double barrel culverts anymore, they're not permitted by the D E C, so you end up having to do custom-made box culverts, that's what the state approves now. So that's what's gonna end up having to go here. We had to do, uh, you know, SECA on this, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and so basically, this would just be the town board accepting, you know, um, you know, what had happened here. Initiating a, you know, adopting a negative declaration on this. You can see the short environmental assessment form here that the engineers had gone through, again, standard on every project that we're gonna do, but it is required. So, um, can I get a motion, um, to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike O'Rourke?
Yes.
Yes, now therefore be resolved as follows, one, that the town board hereby adopts the EAF prepared for the proposed action, and the town supervisor is authorized to execute the same. Two, that after considering all the information pertaining to the project, including without limitation, the EAF, the town board hereby adopts the negative declaration attached to it, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Mike O'Rourke?
Yes.
Yes, okay, next, um, and as you know, we're applying, the board approved us to, um, hire the grant writer to apply for the Swim New York grant. Which this year, um, we are eligible to apply, and so the, um, next week, the, the Swim New York grant application is due. And, um, we would be submitting for replacement of the, you know, the town that we built in the fifties. And so we had to do SECA on this, and so again, the engineering firm prepared. And so we had to do SECA on this, and so again, the engineering firm prepared, um, the, uh, environmental assessment form. And so I would, I would just ask the board to, um, accept the, we're gonna pass the resolution accepting this. This is required to be submitted next week with, um, the grant application. Certain questions? No? Can I get a motion to waive the, uh, reading of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby declares its intent to act as lead agency in review of the said project and directs that a notice of intent to act as lead agency be circulated to all involved and interested agencies identified in the F E A F. And two, that the town supervisor is authorized to sign part one of the F E A F. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy. Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next, this is required to be submitted with the grant application. So basically, um, we're looking at a, if you may recall from the pool study that we did a couple of years ago, it was estimated that the replacement of the town pool in its current form would be anywhere from five to seven million dollars. We are applying for, um, you know, a seven million dollar project to the state, there is a twenty percent match required. So if we do, if we're lucky enough to be awarded the grant, we would have a one point four million dollar, uh, requirement and the match. Now, I don't know where else we're gonna get anyone to give us, um, yeah, what is that, five point six million dollars towards a pool? This is the only game in town. So, um, if the town board is really sincerely interested in pursuing replacing the pool, we have to apply for this grant, otherwise there, you know, there are no other pool grants that I'm aware of. And so I guess what I would say is that what's likely to happen over, you know, you get this, um, and then you've gotta basically, um, there's gonna be at least a year or two before you're into heaven to put forward the match. Over that time, we will have had time to, you know, um, get reimbursed. In fact, most if not all of the time we actually need to start building this pool, um, if we get this, will have been done with the Riverlight Park projects that were currently underway. And so I.
I have a question.
Yes.
If we do not get this with our one point four million.
We're not gonna, I mean, I don't think we're gonna be doing the pool, so I think this is.
You didn't answer my question.
Yes.
I said, if we do not get the grant with our deposit or whatever twenty percent that we're putting.
No, you don't give it deposit. No, there's no, there's no deposit.
No, the twenty percent.
Yeah.
Allow me to finish, please. The twenty percent, would it return to us or no?
We don't.
If we do not get it.
We don't pay anything out, don't you?
Oh, I thought you said it requires twenty percent.
So basically, it's only.
Only if we get it.
Only if we get it.
The way, let me, let me explain how this works. So, okay, so typically with, when you get a, like a grant, federal or, um, I would, I would more call it a cost share, okay? So like, take the FEMA projects that we've done, okay? The Continental Road Culver, we had a ten percent cost share with the federal government. And what basically happens is, like all grants, even FEMA, even disaster grants, the town has to bond it out. Because the town doesn't just have four million dollars sitting in reserves to replace infrastructure destroyed by natural disasters, right? So in the case of the Continental Road Culver, we had to bond it out, we did the work, we've submitted for reimbursement. The project cost one point three, FEMA's gonna cut us a check for one point two, or whatever it is, like minus the ten percent. So they're only gonna reimburse you, so if the pool is seven million dollars, they're only gonna reimburse you five point six million dollars of the cost of the pool. That, that's how that works. So really, you're, the town already has to do the project anyway to even get the money back. But that's just how all these grants work.
All right.
So, you know, um. So that's, that's basically.
They're all reimbursed.
Every, every state and federal grant is, you know, reimbursable. I mean, some might give you an, and it's so kind of like a small advance, but they're not giving you the whole thing. Maybe they'll give you twenty-five percent advance.
Like for planning.
Yeah, yeah, for like planning work, yeah. So that's, that's basically, and so what we've been doing is, um, we've got, we've got the engineering, we've got the design, we've got, we've done a lot of work here, I mean, we're basically at the point where we now have this, we're gonna submit it and, um, you know, we're gonna see where it goes. And obviously, if we don't get it, then, you know, like the town board's back having a discussion about, you know, what is, like, what does the public wanna do with this? Are we gonna, you know, continue to, to move forward? Are we gonna do something lesser like a, like a splash pad or whatever? But I think, before we get to that question, I think we have to give it a shot to see if we can get this money.
And do you know how long it's gonna take, a year, two? A year?
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll know about this like, by early next year. Yeah, we'll, we'll know if we got it, and if we don't get it, well, then that's gonna change the trajectory of how quick this project can happen.
Couple of months.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Cause when I agreed to move forward on this, um, one of the components that was supposed to be in our, our ask was to, um, actually do repair or refurbishing the pool. Is this just for replacing it?
There's not an option, the state, and we spoke to the, we spoke to the state about that, they're not, they don't believe that our seventy, eighty-year-old pool can be repaired and replaced.
The pool, the pool, um, engineer did. So there was time to buy us time and given the economics, I, I just, okay, I, I'm not.
Okay.
Okay, now it's on one vote, so that's fine. I just don't think.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you what the pool engineering discussion we had with the state was that would, you know, putting a liner in the pool and doing that was not, they would not consider that. I, I got you, but it doesn't fit the grant program, so. Is there any other questions from board members on this?
I mean, I think we can ask for the grant and see where it goes.
Yeah.
If we don't get, if we don't get seven million dollars, we're looking at a splash pad, I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I do have, I think it's really that simple.
Splash around, go to Long Pond.
Sounds good, okay.
Okay, um, so, I'll just, yeah, I'll just read this. So this is a, uh, resolution authorizing submission of a grant application to New York State Department of Parks Recreation, Historic Preservation for the Twenty Twenty Five New York Statewide Investment and More Swimming Grants Program, Swims New York, Approval of a Local Match Contribution. Keeping in mind that you don't actually make that, I explained how the match works, so I think as long as everyone understands that. Whereas the New York State Office of Parks and Recreation, Historic Preservation, and the Dormitory Authority of New York State are accepting applications for the Twenty Twenty Five Funding Round of New York State Investment and More Swimming Grants Program. Whereas the town of Cornwall is preparing to request financial assistance for the Swims Grant Program pursuant to Environmental Conservation Law, Article fifty-four, Title fifteen, for the purpose of replacing the existing pool and poolhouse pump building, demolishing the existing waiting pool, installing additional parking areas where the existing waiting pool is located and. Whereas these improvements are essential to ensure the safety and longevity of the Riverlight Park Pool and will reduce further maintenance, maintenance costs and preserve the park's long-term viability for recreational purposes. Whereas upgrading the critical, the critical infrastructure will support the continued use of Riverlight Park as a core recreational facility in the community. And now therefore be resolved, if the town of Cornwall's town board supports the submission of a grant application by the town of Cornwall for the Twenty Twenty Five Funding Round of the New York Swims Grant Program, be it further resolved that the town of Cornwall commits to funding the twenty percent match required by an award of the New York State or the New York Swims Grant in the amount of one point four million dollars. Be it further resolved that the aforementioned potential grant is subject to the approval of the town board as a form, as to form and content, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
I guess.
Ms. Scott.
I'm staying.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rancy.
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have the New York Forward Small. So, um, let's see what we have here. Okay, so, so ten, just real quick on ten. So you may recall, we've put out, um, you may recall that we've put out a number of RFPs related to.
We sent an email.
The small project fund. Yeah, it was, it was, you got, you got all of them, um, we're not recording anything tonight.
We're not doing anything tonight.
It literally just came in yesterday, so we're not, we need time to go through them. So basically, we'll be back in November because in order for the small project fund to move forward, we need to award a grant administrator and someone that's gonna do environmental testing. And so we have, we had to have a minimum of two proposals per RFP. We've reached our minimum threshold, so we can award in November. And that would be the way to move forward on at least trying to get this program up and running. Next, we have a Riverlight Park Survey Recommendation Award. This is needed, um, for the, um, uh, Riverlight Park projects that we're doing for the New York Forward Grant. We need to, and this will come out of the two million dollars that we borrowed, um, for the New York Forward Grant, um, the program, which includes, um, that's gonna be the, the walking trail around the pond, that's gonna be, um, upgrades to bathroom facilities, that's gonna be the ice house improvements, that's gonna be, um, you know, the playground's also part of that, um, two million dollars too. And so this comes out of that amount, and like, again, like what I would say is that, um, most if not all of that, uh, Riverlight Park projects that we're currently working on, the playground, um, should be done in about a week. We will then take the four hundred thousand dollars, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have between, you know, the two legislative grants we have and some other sources, that'll go towards paying down that two million in debt service. After we do the ice house and we do the Rings Pond walking trail, that's another, you know, uh, million and a quarter that will go towards paying that down. We believe that we will come very close next year to paying off the entire borrowing for the Riverlight Park projects. But as far as the survey, we need that in order to continue the work that we're, you know, improving it. Uh, we also need it really towards the pool as well, because as we're kind of, and also Mungar Cottage, we're working on the Mungar Cottage project. We cannot go forward with these projects unless we have a complete survey of the park, there's never been one done.
And you can't build plants unless you have a survey.
Yes, so we need a survey. And so we have three different, um, options here, you can see the, uh, we have Engineering and Surveying Properties P C. That's the recommendation, I would ask the board to authorize us to hire Engineering and Surveying Properties P C to do a Riverlight Park survey. Is there any questions?
No.
Okay, can I get a motion to?
What, what's that?
Yes.
How many were that, three?
Three, yeah, you could see the three.
On the top sheet.
Yeah, you could see the three.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and this, and this, you know, again, these are part of like the soft costs of the Riverlight Park projects that are gonna come out of that, that capital project line in the JNA fund.
So moved.
Yeah, can I get a motion to, to accept the, um, the, uh, award to Engineering and Surveying Properties for twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
I guess.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Mike Rancy.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, next we have approved proposal to increase impounded dog and kennel fees. So we have an updated list here that the town clerk's office has prepared, we spoke about this last time. Is there, at the last work, uh, session last week, is there any questions before I ask the board to approve the fees?
No.
No.
Jane, yeah.
No? Okay. Can I get a motion to, um, to change the impounded dog and kennel fees, um, per the sheet that's listed here?
So moved. Second.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Edelman Rice.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so I do not have any item, well, you know what, I mean, I guess I'll just, it was gonna be in my supervisor's report. I mean, I, this is, for the interest of time, this is, uh, this is good news, and some of you may have heard this, but, um, the county executive and the C D B G Advisory Committee, they recommended awarding the town of Cornwall the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to be used towards the senior center, ADA bathroom and meeting room improvements. So, you know, that's, um, the legislature just has to, um, approve this now and. I mean, look, I mean, I guess, I guess the only, not to put a damper on this, you know, look, if the federal government decides to get rid of the program, I again, continue to think that this is probably one of the most popular programs in the country and that if, if, that something in some form will be around to do this one. So I don't think this is gonna go away, I think we're gonna have it, obviously we'll know because, you know, I know we're in a government shutdown right now and at some point they're gonna have to get back to adopting something. And I do believe in whatever they pass, that there will be C D B G, both Republicans and Democrats like this program. So I really can't imagine what's gonna go away, but that's just me, but, um, so I am, I guess, cautiously optimistic. Obviously, um, as similar manner, we're not gonna do really any more work on this until we know that the program is like.
Sure.
Is there, but as long as it's there, we've got the money, and that's gonna be used on the new section of Mungar Cottage, not the part that we're proposing to, to tear down and, and, and replace, but the new section that's currently used, that's where we're proposing to make the upgrades. All right, I have a comment before we get into, uh, actually, no, hang on a second, before we do that, let's do the committee reports.
Public comment.
Public comments.
No, we don't, I'm sorry, we don't normally do it that way, um, but sure, public comments. Yeah.
Public comments.
Yes.
I, I, I have to be recording or you have this tonight, but, um, my company is the environmental, but we put a bid in.
Yes.
And I just wanted to make myself available to you if you ever have questions about the bids or.
Sure.
Anything in the process.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public, yes. Yeah, uh.
Um, I, can I give everybody a copy of my letter? Cause I have fifty-six signatures on it that I'm not going to have time to be revealing to you, so I.
Sure, yeah, give a letter.
And then, um.
Thank you.
It's good, thank you.
Okay, um, to the members of the board and community leaders, this letter began as an effort to represent families who can't attend meetings like this. I'm like, whoa, it's all right. All right, we're, I lost my place, okay, um, who can't attend meetings like this because of the realities of family life work and other responsibilities, but when others heard about it, the message quickly grew into something broader, a collective note of solidarity from more than fifty residents across Cornwall. Families, business owners, neighbors from many different backgrounds who share one simple belief, investing in our community matters. We recognize the challenges the town faces in balancing its budget and the broader difficulties of this moment, especially amid the ongoing government shutdown, but these are exactly the times when community-centered investments matter most. The decorations and lighting along Main Street and at the pond are not just aesthetic choices, they represent our shared pride, spirit, and resilience. Supporting them and efforts like them affirms who we are as a community and strengthens the local economy that sustains us all. I met many of you in this room for the first time several years ago, but we came together to discuss a shared goal for the holiday season, to put Cornwall on the map as a holiday destination. We may have had different ideas about how to achieve that goal, but we agree on the purpose, to give Cornwall its own special experience, one that residents wouldn't have to leave town to find, while also attracting visitors to shop, dine, and experience the charm of our community. Four years later, that vision has been realized. Through collaboration among the town, the village, local businesses, volunteers, committees, and both private and public funds, Cornwall is becoming known as a destination, not as a place people leave for the holidays, but one they come to. From the beautifully lit tree at the town circle, to the snowflake-lining Main Street, from the town and village halls that seem to compete for who can shine brighter, to the Nutcrackers welcoming visitors into the square where the great tree illuminates the village. We've created a setting, we've created a setting that lifts spirits, draws visitors, and builds pride. Cornwall could truly be the scene of a Hallmark movie. But we're not done, the progress we've made didn't happen overnight, it's the result of years of investment, creativity, and collaboration, and it must continue. The holidays now stretch into a full season from Thanksgiving to January first, a celebration filled with old traditions, new ones, and reimagined ones, tree lighting, shops and all events, storytime. Tree lighting, shops and all events, storytime, Santa on fire trucks, menorah lightings, brunches and the iconic ball drops, just to name a few. Events like these make the holidays in Cornwall extraordinary, memorable and most importantly, never lonely. This year, two major efforts continue that momentum. The possible addition of a floating tree on the pond and the expansion of snowflakes along Main Street, both continuing the work to, of many, to transform Cornwall into a destination. Across the country, towns that invest in beautification, lighting and community programming see measurable economic results. According to the National Main Street Center and the American Planning Association, festive enhancements in downtown events can increase local retail and restaurant sales by 20 to 50% during the holiday season. Local evidence confirms that here too. Our village restaurants report that the holiday period is their busiest time of year with weekend bookings full and steady foot traffic fueled by the experience we've collectively created. When Cornwall shines, Cornwall prospers. It's important to keep perspective on the numbers that matter. The town board oversees roughly 20% of my total property tax bill. The remaining 80% is controlled outside of this room, the vast majority going to the school district, with the rest divided among county, fire and library taxes, together counting for roughly 13. The affordability challenges facing Cornwall families are not the result of town spending. Even if the town stopped collecting taxes entirely, the cost of living here would not materially change. Debating how to solve affordability by cutting small expenditures such as beautification, lighting or community events is a scapegoat argument. Scraping for savings that have no meaningful impact on the overall cost of living only harms our quality of life. The town's modest investments in beautification and public spaces are not what makes Cornwall expensive, they are what makes it worth the cost of living here. Communities that stop investing in themselves don't stay the same, they decline. When public spaces are neglected, research shows that property values fall by an average to 10 to 20%, while vandalism, petty crime increases much to 30. The correlation is clear, strong, well-maintained, well-lit communities experience less crime, stronger local economies and higher community satisfaction. In other words, cutting investment doesn't save money, it costs more in the long run. Cornwall's parks and recreation spaces, beautification efforts and shared experiences are not luxuries. They are essential to maintaining the mentality, safety and character that make Cornwall the kind of place we want to live in, visit and contribute to. When we invest in beauty, we invest in belonging. Where we live is a choice and people choose Cornwall because it feels alive. We care for our spaces, we invest in one another, we preserve what makes our community unique. When we stop investing in those shared values, enjoy, connection and pride, we begin to lose the very essence of what makes Cornwall special. Many of us are signing this letter to work here in the 1990s and early 2000s. We had wonderful childhoods and we've returned to raise our own families because we believe in Cornwall and its potential. We want our children to have the same magical experience than more. We want them to experience spontaneous, magical snowfall and big lineups to greet Santa, walk under twinkling lamp posts on the way to a local bookstore, gathered by the pond under glowing lights, watch Santa arrive on a fire truck or listen to stories read by community leaders on their way home from school. These are the moments that create lifelong attachment and community continuity. They are priceless. We're not asking for extravagance, we're asking for perspective. The town's shares of our, share of our taxes is small, but the return on the community investment is enormous. The cost of beautifying our town or enhancing public life is minor to the value it creates in economic growth, civic pride, public safety and overall well-being. Cornwall deserves to keep shining, we can afford it and more importantly, we cannot afford to stop. With gratitude and respect, 56 residents of Cornwall.
Thank you for that. Is there, is there anybody else that has public comment? Yes. Sure, yeah, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, you got a green post, postcard, I don't exactly know what that.
Uh, benefit assessment. The benefit assessment district? Do you, do you have that?
All right, who's the final one looking forward to it?
Wasn't that the size?
Wasn't there a?
Yeah.
Oh, no. That would've just been that, yeah. It would've been the benefit assessment district.
Oh, okay.
And that, yeah, the only thing I can think of is that wasn't there a ZBA meeting last night? And if you were, but you would know if you went to that, so.
Exactly, it is the benefit assessment.
So, okay, so basically, I don't, I'm not sure where you live, but if you're in a sewer district.
No, I, I live over by the high school. I have a septic system.
Sanitation?
It wasn't for benefit assessment district.
Garbage.
Sanitation. Yeah, you're in a sanitation district, so.
Does someone tell you it doesn't mean it means sanitation?
No, no. That's, that's a good one. Does the, does the town pick up your garbage?
Yeah.
Yeah, then.
Actually, no, that's, that might actually be a county, it's 94. 94 is a county, isn't it?
Yeah, but we, we pick up, like depending on what side of the, yeah. You would've gotten that for the, for the sanitation district, that's a special district. And so the, I mean, look, basically anyone that's, pretty much anyone that, that lives in the town of Cornwall outside of the village is gonna get one of those because you're in some form of a special district. And tonight is when you can come and you can be like, oh, I don't like, you know, this cost going up or what's going on with, why are you doing work in the sewer district and why am I, you know? So basically, you would've gotten it because every year we have to levy taxes in order to pay for trash collection and tipping fees.
Okay.
And so, you know, if you, if you have any comment on that, I mean, feel free to.
No, I just wanted to know something about, thank you.
Okay. Is there, is there anybody else? Uh, sure, you start.
I just had two, well, two questions. One, if there was any response yet for reducing the speed limit on Mineral Springs Road? If there was any response to that?
So, okay, so let me just add this into, there has not been. We are still, and you're, you may recall probably the same, what timeframe? We had also asked for a, for the state to put in a school speed zone reduction request in front of the middle school. It, that's going on two years now. Every month or two, I'm checking in with the state, we have a tracking number on that. But there's still, now that, see, the problem is with the process is that now the state, in the past, the town would, would have to hire the traffic engineer and do the study and submit it. The state went and changed the whole process. So now what you do is the town board passes it and as you know, it goes to the county. The, the commissioner of public works approves it and the county engineer signs it. It goes to the state. The state then decides, are they gonna do a study? Do they need a study? If the state has to do a study, they're gonna pay for it. But, so it's, I guess what I would say is it's caught up in, last I checked, they said they're still reviewing it. Similar to what, yeah, I mean, look, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm very disappointed in how long it takes the DOT to get through things. Um, I think we've all, I would've thought they would've approved the school zone speed reduction in front of the middle school because to me, that's a safety issue for kids, but the state's still sitting on it, which is why we had to take matters into our own hands and put a crosswalk in and put that speed sign in because at least we could do that. We could redouble our efforts to reach after them because I know you're relying on this reduction on Mineral Springs.
Yes, because people seem to think like they see hot rods.
Yeah.
It's pretty well-known that there's really no, no offense to the police officers, I know they go up and go around the old Mineral Springs, but there's really no activity or monitoring of that road. And I know it's kind of a jurisdiction battle to where it is with Smith Globe Road in town and the dairy, but people who have seen speeds on that road, once they get off Mineral, or off of Angola on the Mineral Springs, it's like they just smack the gas and do 80, 90 miles an hour up there. And we got a lot of children on that road.
Sure.
For a school bus, the other day, did one actually stop to let her off the bus because of the speeds of cars flying up behind them.
Oh, geez.
And it's nice that we have the speed monitors on Angola, but those are in slow sections of Angola, it'd be nice to see them on Mineral Springs instead where people go obscenely fast. I've even offered the police department, use my driveway, ticket people all day long, will pay for the cost of the pool then, over the course of the next few years. They're all going back and forth to the commons and once they hit that road, they know it's a romance landing for cops. So I, just if we could do something about that, it'd be nice.
Let me, let me see if, well, I mean, certainly on the enforcement piece, I mean, that, that's a, I mean, we'll ask, just like, I mean, I was out in Beaver Dam Lake the past couple of weeks, it's that time of the, you know, of the year. And there's, certainly I know Beaver Dam Lake, we've got that speeding issue on Shore Road that just continues to, Shore Drive, see, I'm a, you know, Beaver Dam Lake resident here himself. There's a speeding issue out there as well and so, yeah, certainly more enforcement is needed all over the town. I would ask you to, chief, to, you know, see what we could do to get some more enforcement. In terms of the, the DOT, I think we're gonna need to, and you have my commitment to go to our state legislators because quite frankly, look, it's great if I call them, but like, I can't rattle their cage like, you know, the state legislators can because they have direct oversight, so, I mean, I'm happy to, to talk to Matt Fiscali in Senator Scupas' office or talk to the senator himself and ask him to rattle the cage up in Albany because that's where it's currently sits, is, is on somebody's desk. I don't know how many, you know, they may have not even gotten to it yet, right? So I think that, you know, again, that's not acceptable and, you know, everyone has issues with the DOT, whether it's potholes or whether it's, but that's not acceptable. It shouldn't be like two years. So, you know, we'll, we'll definitely do our best to rattle our cages here at this level, but I am gonna, you know, now escalate it. At this point, I think it needs to go beyond the town in trying to get this done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name, please?
Uh, Vincent Quayev.
Can you spell your last name?
Q U A G L I E T T A.
Thank you.
Is there, is there anybody, I think there was, right, yes, Eileen?
Hi, Eileen Hawke. Um, a couple of things. So I'm, I'm not from labor, she said a lot, what I said, maybe not from labor as well. Also, you can continue his problem down through at Gold Road too, because in Gold Road, they still, it's still a raceway, I sit there trying to get down my drive quite half the time. But anyway, a couple of things. First, I'm sort of presenting a letter tonight for you to accept six more pieces of nativity, which haven't purchased. They're supposed to arrive yesterday, the camel and the donkey are kind of slow and they're supposed to arrive tomorrow and the town will pick them up once they get here. They're, it's all been done with donations, it's not down, it's not even grant money, it's all town people who are, this money's been funded and we're still, we're still fundraising for it. So before we get any comments or stuff, this is taxpayer money, it's not. Secondly, the comments have been made towards some of the business people in town and stuff like that about the commercial quarter and, you know, the reason when we were looking at one, I think it's a, when Buffy and I were doing an art project and the Quakers, somebody at Quakers wanted to put up art there, we were thrilled because it soared the entrance into the town. And that's how we saw Quaker coming into town, around the circle, down Main Street, to Hudson, they connect the whole town and village and all the businesses and stuff. The businesses did not ask for more snowflakes, so the comments about they should pay for themselves. You know, we have, we had nothing, and I realize that people have complained that they don't, they don't like the brightness or whatever, but we've had nothing like positive comments to the Main Street Committee, which is a town committee, about them. Same thing in the village, they've, they've been very well received. The tree, this floating tree, if you all know Phyllis, our wonderful recreation director, has really endorsed getting this tree. She researched it, she did a whole bunch of stuff on it last year and this year. This tree is a beautiful tree. It, it'll fold down, it'll store nicely, it'll be around for 10, 15 years and stuff. The pond, as we found when Tom thought we were absolutely insane wanting to put ducks in the pond for July 4th to take care of the duck derby, you know, it was like, you know, what are you gonna do? Well, the town people loved it. We were getting comments, there was comments on Facebook and everything else about how people walk there every night with their kids because their kids have to see the ducks before they went to bed. You know, afterwards, we changed out the ducks because we didn't want the ducks to get stale in people's minds, so we put swans in and stuff. And then, you know, from the swans, then we went to dragons. Unfortunately for the tweens who like to fish there, the, they became targets for who can get them with their poles and colors. They, they become their little, little puncture marks and whatever. But, you know, Tom's crew was, was very diligent going out on the boat and placing the poles and stuff and people loved them and, and stuff. And I think the tree will have the same effect. We saw a sense of pride, the more stuff we put in town and with these things with the snowflakes going up later. I, I always say, and I know I went down, it goes, but why can't we have nice things too? And if you go to other towns and they've got decorations up, then they've got this and they've got that, and Cornwall never had that. I've been here for, for more than 60 years, my family went, when I moved up here when I was a child and stuff. I own a business here, I volunteer here, I'm on a ridiculous amount of committees here and I, I understand budgets. I was a business manager by trade, I have a accounting degree, I get everything. But one of the things isn't, okay, times are tough, you have a budget, you know, issue or whatever, it's not immediately to go to cutting. You're also trying to figure out how to bring in income to take care of those expenditures as well. Firstly, our, our product for, the government is a business, whether you wanna look at it that way or not, it is. It provides services and stuff like that and to pay for those services, they collect taxes. Those taxes provide a product. Firstly, I pay my taxes, I expect certain things in return. I'm well aware of everybody else's situation and that some people are hurting. There's programs, you know, that help people with their taxes, there's a STAR program that says, I'm a senior, get all this stuff in the mail now. And, but you don't just cut every other thing to the bone so that when you are paying your taxes, you don't feel that you're not getting any of the services in return. So, you know, to, I, I understand where you're coming from saying, before you spend money, grant money, and yes, grant money is tax money, it's been taxed somewhere in the state and paid out, but you know what? If we don't spend and use it, some other town will. And that's how they have nice stuff and we don't. And I don't think some decorations and stuff like that and going into Cornwall pride is a bad thing either. And I think it makes, it makes it easier to write those checks and pay for them and stuff, you know, when, when you're doing that. So I, I'm happy to meet this week to talk about this tree, you know, with some other people who were there and answer any of your guys' questions and stuff like that, but I don't think it's gonna take away from the serenity of the pond, I think it's gonna add to it, it'll just be beautiful, it's just lights in the form of a tree. It's not, quality, it's not this and that and I just ask that everybody have their open mind about this because I do think it's an important thing to.
Is there, thank you, Eileen, yes, is there, yes?
Hi, I'm Angelo Shaberry, I'm the town tree warden. This is the first I've heard of anything regarding a floating plastic Christmas tree in the middle of the pond. A floating, non-living Christmas tree in the middle of the pond. I just wanted to bring up the point that about nine months ago, we had a discussion here about fate of the tree at the circle and that it needed remediation, otherwise it would need replacement. And before we commit to spending money on a new Christmas decoration to float in the pond, we think about the cost that would be associated with remediating the tree in the circle. And, and look at both of those at, at the same time and decide where funds would best be allocated.
Thank you. You know, in fact, I would, I would ask that, we have $12,000. I do not know if tree remediation, we'd have to check with Dazny, if that's a capital eligible expense. If it is, I, I, I don't know, is that like, is that a few thousand dollar thing? Is that a, yeah. So I think, I think we, I mean, we've already, what, allocated now, how much towards the snowflakes, what was that?
Seven.
$7,000, so we have $5,000 left, give or take. I think we need to find out if what you're talking about is a capital eligible expense, we should look at that. If it's not, then certainly, look, we've got the floating Christmas tree, which you're right, we don't want that tree to die in the traffic circle. So I think we definitely want to, you know, figure out a way how to keep that, but we would have to maybe take it out of, we have a, we have a beautification line in the budget that pays for beautification in our, you know, parks and in certain areas. So I could think that maybe we could use that towards fixing that. So maybe it's not an either or, but we need to look at to see, if we can get it paid for by grandfathers, we should do that. So that sounds like that's something for Megan and I to work on tomorrow. We'll ask about it and thank you for bringing that up. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi, I was Penny. I just want to say, I think your tree will be lovely. I think it's a great idea, the floating tree, and I think it's gonna, it's gonna benefit the community more than you spend on it. Also. Also, the thirty-two thing, that happened to me the other day, where somebody, to me, that was just a bad building, it should be a dead end.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say. Anyway, that's not why I'm here. I'm truly living the dream, like these two other people. Pardon, I have a ear infection, I'm okay, I'm a medicine soul. I live across from the La Cabin on Angola Road.
Sure.
And I'm living the dream, I am living the dream. My family purchased that house from the original owner, Chelsea Gross, he was, his son was the former mayor of Cornwall, that's it. Years ago, I guess nineteen eighties. The, the land was divided up, my house was built, there was a farmhouse here, one oh three, I'm ninety-nine. I'm living the dream, I am living the dream. I mean, last night, somebody was, doo, 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 like the cars. I seem to remember when my dad bought that property years ago and built the house, that there was another, like, I don't even think that was opened by Penny Lane, I think that they did that, like, they, they added that exit for the trucks and the cars and the travelers and, you know, I sprayed my house off and cleaned my siding, and it's dirty again, because there's so much traffic, I mean, and it doesn't stop. Midnight, there's a guy who comes by at twelve twenty. I actually told one of the police officers, I think it was Parker, I said, you need to park in my driveway, okay? Because, I mean, every, every night at like around twelve twenty, doo, 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 that's basically, it's kind of the music that, you know, it's, I'm not trying to, but that's what it is. It's some kind of like, you know, beat, and it's going through every single night, and my house is filthy. Oh, and by the way, somebody else bought that little tiny, that little piece of land, and all the trees are gone. So it's filthy, the, the noise from nine W, I think I need remediation on, around my property. Then my neighbor tells me, well, they're gonna cut your property off, and I was like, really? And additionally, whoever bought that property, Mr. Gross owned it, divided it up, built in the eighties, I don't know if you lost, got that, but someone else put, there's like three buildings, I was, I don't know how that got built, you know? There, there's like three different houses on the, the property was divided in half, it was an acre of land. I think it's actually point six six and on point four four, but, you know, there's three different houses there. Then down below, where you have all the big signs, and I'm not complaining about the signs, though, the, I don't know who bought that, they emptied that land, so now I have all the walls. Like, I had a bear in my yard the other day, you know, I went to my neighbor's house, I said, just, you know, I upped my, my ring camera so that I could see if the bear comes back, so I, because they have kid, the young kids.
Sure.
So it's, you know, I'm living the dream, living the dream. That's all I have to say.
Is Poppy coming close?
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there anybody else? No, before we get into.
So the speed limit would be good, you know?
Well, no, I mean, I mean, certainly, yes, so obviously the speed limit.
And also closing off the, the truck, the traffic trail, that's another idea.
So you're saying, yeah.
If they try to turn around my driveway, I have to comb it, they were like, they're digging up my gravel. And if I put pavement, then I have to pay more, more taxes.
No, I, I, chief, that's, Penny Lane's at Town Road track?
Yes, right on. The one off the, on the offlane?
Yeah.
That is not a town.
What's, what's your address again?
I don't live on, I live on Angola Road.
You live on Angola?
I live on the corner, it's across from the, the La Cabin, so I get the traffic trailers.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, gotcha.
It's just, I'm living, it's literally living the dream, I mean, totally. And then I have this, these people, like, it wasn't the neighbors there now, but they built all this, all these buildings, like, there's like a pool house, and meanwhile, the old fence that was there, I don't even know if I can put that back in. I went to the, to see if I could put the fence in, and they're like, well, you have to go and get approval. I was like, that fence was there before they built that house on my property, like, it's like, my dad was living there, he was elderly, so. Living the dream.
I mean, look, we, we can, let's have a discussion offline about this situation.
Will you come to your office, make an appointment?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, like I said earlier, I've said in the previous meeting, please, you know, I'm there every day. Email me, call the office, make an appointment, ask Megan, she'll, she'll fit whoever in my calendar, and we can meet and talk about whatever you'd like to talk about. Is there, is there anybody else before we move on to committee reports? No? Okay. All right, is there, so I guess let's start off with councilmember Reyes, do you have anything?
The planning board did meet this month, but the building department submitted their report. They had seventy-six onsite inspections, issued twenty permits, this is September, and they maintained twenty open planning board projects.
I don't have any report, Josh.
No, okay, Councilmember McCarty?
All I have is the highways, the report unfortunately, I was able to get sanitation.
Okay. Gordo, 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 you wanna go first? I'll go ahead.
All right, so the only things I have are the senior independence program. They did report this month, which was a very busy month. Ninety-nine services, which accounts for about seventy-four hours worth of helping residents in our community. Yeah, which netted, if you talk about in-kind services, of twenty-four hundred seventy-eight dollars, twenty-six cents. A total now of sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars, seven one cents. I mean, this is a ten thousand dollar investment, so I think we really have done well with that. Our senior advisory committee, we went on September twenty-fifth to the FDR Library. Thank the majority of the board for your support for the bus transportation to the FDR Library. There were seniors there that met FDR, not once, but twice when they were four years old. And it was a very memorable day for a lot of the seniors that went. They connected to everything that the displays had, which was quite, they actually remembered everything, the newspaper clippings, everything, it was just a remarkable day. And they were very grateful, they were very grateful for a chance to step back into time. October fifteenth, Storm King Art Center actually invited the seniors for a free day, where they had admission into the art center, they had a free tram tour. And I really am very grateful to them because they, they went above and beyond to help with accessibility issues where the seniors could not walk even from, maybe from a stop to the cafeteria, you know, from the cafe. And that's what makes our community such a nice place, so I, I really my hat's off to Storm King Art Center. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Do you find it?
Yeah, but, but now I have a hard time too. Okay. Yeah, thanks. He said it to me with, I have words. Anyway, sanitation department collected thirty, three hundred forty tons of garbage, collecting, costing the town forty-seven thousand nine hundred twenty-eight ninety-three for the month of September twenty twenty-five. Sanitation collected forty-nine point nine tons of recycling, costing the town two thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars eighty-seven cents for the month of September for twenty twenty-five. Both the grounds closed down and winterized the kiddie pool. Weekly mowing, refactoring, vacuum, rebacking the downtown grounds. Testment all heaters and boilers and furnaces. Repair the handicap door opener at Monden Cottage, deep clean Monden Cottage. Installed a new park, Allison's and Riverlight Park, lower crust. Time, is that, the nighttime parking, nighttime?
Hours of operation for town room.
Hours of operations, thank you. Highway department assisted sanitation with holiday double backups, vacation car ops. Road mower town, of townwide, demoed the playground for Riverlight Park, or at Riverlight Park, installed a hundred and twenty feet of thirty-inch drain pipe, and a thirty-by-forty construction for major drainage issues on Hess Road. Installed a hundred and forty feet of six-foot private fence behind the building ground shop for privacy for the residents. Installed fifty feet of sidewalk and carry road for the new crosswalk across Main Street by Middle School. The street sweeper's out of service in New Jersey for five to eight weeks for warranty repairs. Tom has attended New York State Association Town Super attendance of Highway Education Conference in Niagara Falls and back in September twenty-three to twenty-six. Who cares?
You're trying to kill him with the words, you're killing him.
I'm already supposing for you ever again.
Please, no. Anyway, that's it.
Just call it a meet and greet.
I love it.
To further your education. There you go.
Take once a month.
So, all right, the, the police department, let's see here. So for September, we've got fifty traffic and appearance tickets issued, twenty-nine motor vehicle accidents, fifteen arrests made, I don't know, was, was this an abnormally high month for arrests?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
It's packed school. Is it mostly juvenile?
It's mostly interpersonal stuff, so I can't explain it.
No, I got you, I got you.
But that's a lot of discovery you had to.
Yeah.
Had to turn over.
Yeah. Three nine-one-one hangups, thirteen alarm, nine animal complaints, although, hey, it's great, we got animal control there, right? So that, I imagine that's helping.
Oh, yeah.
You're not driving, you know, dumped dogs around the county?
No, I think good with, I think the two we had to bring there.
Okay, good.
Angel right away.
Good, good, good. Two disabled vehicles, fourteen domestic incidents, thirty-six medical calls, three parking complaints, thirteen suspicious vehicles and persons, twelve house checks, thirteen assist other agencies. We also have the, this is the case work conducted in September, I believe the board has this too. So we've got, we've got that. Moving on to New Windsor Medical Services, again, we continue to have no calls missed. The response times for Town Cornwall, five minutes and forty-nine seconds, for the village, six minutes and thirty seconds. Again, great response times, we're doing, everything's happening as it's supposed to be happening. Thank you to, you know, New Windsor EMS employees and to the operations chief over there for, for that. I think maybe just real quick, I think I maybe briefly touched upon the Hasbrook area drainage project. We are looking to now basically wrap up work for the season. So we've stopped putting new pipe in the ground, but we're now replacing sidewalk, and we're gonna be curving on Hasbrook, and we're gonna be repaving. And that's gonna sort of cease operations, like there's, like, what, about like two weeks of work, roughly? That's gonna cease work until, you know, right now, what we're trying to figure out is, we've done Hasbrook and through the backyards leg, but we still have the Curtis and Union, and then where to take all that water? Is that going on the current route? Is that going, you know, down Clinton and down Hazen and through that park? Is it going, you know, another direction, down Clinton and in another direction? If we can avoid going under Main Street and having to shore up two old buildings, we would definitely prefer to not do that.
What that, and also, we gotta change the design.
Yeah, so, you know, so again, like, what we have found with this is, in Cornwall, this is not like you're digging up, you know, green, this isn't green construction.
No.
This is, you know, you're digging up and you're finding stuff that wasn't there on the market, and, and you're basically redesigning as you go along here, so. We're really hoping to avoid having to go under Main Street if possible, at least where it's currently proposed to go. So we're gonna wrap things up, we were actually wrapping up anyway because we weren't gonna work over the winter. So our Genio Brothers is basically wrapping this up for the season after they finish the work on Hasbrook. Sidewalks, curbing, repaving, come back in the spring and finish that last leg of this, and then we'll do restoration work and repaving on all the other roads. But we've made a lot of progress this year, we've been meeting weekly now, basically the whole year.
Yeah, basically, Hasbrook one and two are done, so, Curtis, Union.
So, it's been.
Oh, still have classes?
But the Main Street's definitely an issue.
So that, that's my update on Hasbrook, you know, and, you know, we'll get this done next year. But I'll tell you, though, it's been, it's been an improvement, I mean, where we've put the pipe in the ground. It's, it's working, it, it's working as designed. So I will, I guess moving on, is there any public comments before I adjourn the meeting? No? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. McCarty, Ms. Scott, Ms. Edelman, Ms. McCarty.
Yes.
Yes.